Yeah. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Heydard, would you please, please pledge of allegiance tonight? Mr. Heydard?
Please.
This flag, Emesuva and Breed and Celebrity, well deserved place in our city council meeting. We as Americans should always stand ready to shield and defend it, as our men and women have done in the military for the last 250 years. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Today is June 4, 2019. Time is now 6:00 P.M. The regular reading of the city council of the city of Trinidad will not come to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Benato?
Here.
Goodoff?
Grango?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Matei?
Miles?
Here.
Rico?
Here.
I have a proclamation here for the Shriners International Awareness Day, June 6, 2019. Whoever's going to receive this, do you guys want to, all of you want to come forward? Or two of you or three of you? The office of the mayor of Trinidad, Colorado, proclamation, Shriners International Awareness Day, June 6, 2019. For as Shriners International is a well-known, respected fraternity dedicated to fund, fellowship and philanthropy with hundreds of thousands of members who belong to 171 chapters throughout the world, and whereas members support Shriners Hospitals for children, a pediatric healthcare system that was founded by the Shriners fraternity and provides health care with no financial obligation to patients or their families, and whereas membership in the Shriners fraternity offers the invaluable opportunity to build camaraderie and lifelong friendships with other men of character and upstanding values, and whereas Shriners International offers its local Trinidad members through the Trinidad Shrine Club professional development and leadership opportunities in our local community and internationally, and whereas it is fitting and appropriate to acknowledge and celebrate this wonderful fraternity and its rich history on the anniversary of the day the Imperial Council of Shriners International was formed, on June 6, 1876. Now therefore, I feel up to Rico, Mayor of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, on behalf of the Trinidad City Council, to hereby proclaim, June 6, 2019, as Shriners International Awareness Day. In the city of Trinidad, Colorado, I do encourage all of our citizens to learn more about Shriners International and celebrate its many impressive achievements over the past 143 years. The witness hereof, where I appear to set my hand, caused the seal of this city to be affixed. Mayor Philip Rico.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, you got it.
The camera's here, that's it.
It's again. There are 12 active members of the Trinidad Shriners Club. We meet here in Trinidad, but we're from all over Los Adamas County in fact. We even have a couple of members from Werfino County. Like Mayor Rico and Councilman Matei, I am a former inmate of Primero High School. Ruben here hails from Branson High School. And Dennis from Aguilar. We also have Alan Nichol from Honi. I have due to parliamentary procedure from the BNSF. I am the president of the club this year. Dennis is the secretary. Ruben is the past president. Our vice president is Larry Childs, who does the carriage rides here in town. And our treasurer, John Albert, lives up Santa Fe Trail Regis within Stone's throw of the state line. So, we're from all over the county and we're glad to call Trinidad our hometown. Thank you.
Mayor of the city council, and we appreciate that.
Lance Barron?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item two approved of the agenda, there are changes. One change I'd like to make is I'd like to table the last item on the agenda tonight, which is the executive session, which is item 11. Any other changes that council wishes to make? Would that motion please?
That good?
So that is a change, a motion to put the change?
A second, we need to make a date for that.
If you're not necessarily, but I would try to do the next session.
That's why I was wanting to see if we can set a date for it on July 2nd.
Might need to do that.
We'll find a date that everybody is available, okay? Call vote, please?
Benato?
Yeah.
Grango?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy items for staff reports. First quarter financial report, which is item eight. Cheryl?
It's still not much easier to see, but we've changed up the formatting a little bit from graphs to the actual spreadsheet. We'll see if council likes this better. We could do graphs and worksheets, but let's just see how this goes.
I like the formatting. I like the red.
There's always going to be a little bit of red.
Oh, yeah.
If not, that means I've done some creative modeling. So, good evening, Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Council members, you've all received the first quarter memo and financial statement on your drives. We're going to highlight a little bit of each fund. If you have any questions, just please let me know. Starting off with the general fund, as of the first quarter 2019, we've collected $3.4 million, which is 269,000 more than we budgeted. Of course, the contributing factor is marijuana. We've collected 764,000, and that's 239,000 more than budgeted. Of that 764,000, council had agreed, adopted the policy to put 30% away into reserves. So, from first quarter, 229,000 will be earmarked for marijuana reserves.
But then it's supposed to be 35%?
No, it's 65, 35.
Yeah.
Right?
You're right. Five goes to nonprofits.
No, five, yeah, five goes to nonprofits. An additional five goes to the homeless.
So it was 60, 35, and five?
60, 5, and 30. 6, 5, 5, and 30.
I'm sorry.
So 228,000 goes into reserves?
Yes. If we'd like, if you'd like, we can compare this to 2018. At this time in 2018, we collected 728,000. So this year, we've collected 36,000 more than last year in marijuana money. In 2018, marijuana sales for first quarter, 11,817,000, and that's 19 stores operating at that time. As of March 31, 19, marijuana sales, 11.8 million, 11,870,000 with 24 retails. Which is a slight difference. If you have any questions regarding the other funding sources, licensing, permitting, charges for services, just let me know. They're all kind of about where they need to be. The miscellaneous revenue is under, but that's just one of those funds that's a catch-all. The mineral lease dollars are usually posted to that account or to that category, and that money comes in in September. It's about $47,000. So miscellaneous will always be playing catch-up. And then our muni court revenue is down a little bit. I kind of compared it to last year. We're just down a little bit, so we've got to see if our attorney will start spotting some more.
Come on, attorney.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
So for the motor vehicle sales taxes, we've been going, is that seasonal too?
I, that one's hard to track. Last year it was up. But it fluctuates throughout the year. We can't ever peg that one.
Okay.
Usually it comes in right about where it needs to be by the end of the year.
Okay.
Can we use that screen just a little bit? I don't want to be...
How do I do that? The white ones?
I see it here, but I'm looking at that.
The other one.
The other one.
Is that good?
Very cool. That's fine. So, here.
It swivels up.
Cheryl, what is the agency support?
Yeah, it's funding for Rose Arc Senior Center.
Okay. Those are substantially unfavorable, right?
Well, because those are paid out at the beginning of the year, all in one month.
Okay.
So it'll take rock out at the end of the year. So, anyway, if there's no questions on revenues, we'll jump to expenses. For expenses, we are under budget by 2.8. We've underspent by $381,000. There's a few categories that are over. For example, development service is over expended, is over expended because we did pay out Tara, her final, her accrued leave. And then we also paid the space to create admin fee or something like that for $37,000. So those were high expenses at the first quarter. Miscellaneous is over expended. We did pay the second quarter already of about $101,000 for workman's comp and property and casualty insurance. So that's kind of throwing it off a little. And then economic development is also over expended. We've, I believe, $25,000 was budgeted for business rental assistance. However, $50,000 has been allocated. So there were some other groups that came in for business rental assistance that had already been agreed to. And also, under economic development support line item, $31,000 was paid out for Belluna and $20,000 was paid out for Peak Cinema. Those were also agreed upon expenses a couple of years back that we've helped support them and the businesses. Any questions regarding expenses?
I see we're underspending on police.
That we're understaffed. Sure, that's one of these.
Do we have plans to bring personnel?
We're getting closer to full staff now. We have, I think, two people coming out of the academy. So, I think attorney's feeling we're positive about it now. We're eventually tracking a couple of hours.
Are you being able to attract any number of applications or is it just?
I think that's been tough, but I think it's tough everywhere. It's not just a Trinidad issue.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so that result is an increase to fund balance of $486,000. That's revenues versus expenses. We've collected 486,000 more. Okay, regarding power and light fund, we are 27% collected on revenues. So we have a 2.1% over collection, which is about $160,000. We are over expended by just a little bit, $25,000. We, that has a lot to do with the very cold temperatures we experienced in January and February. So our power purchases are kind of off right now. I compared revenues for 2018. At this time, we were at 26% in 18. So right now, 27%. Again, I attribute that to the weather. It was colder than the first year. And then distribution is over expended. Just a little note, we have a transformer on order for the hospital. It was just expended to the wrong line item. It should have been spent against miscellaneous jobbing. So that'll clear itself out, but that was about $26,000.
The city paid for that?
Oh, they'll reimburse, we paid for it and they'll reimburse us, yes. And then I've separated the capital outlay from the revenues and expenditures so you can actually see how operating costs are functioning. The lease proceeds under the revenue line item has to do with reimbursements we're receiving through the loan or the financing for the metering project. And then capital outlay, it's the mirror of it. That's what we're expending. So we're expending for the metering project and then being reimbursed from loan proceeds. Net result, $73,000 increase to fund budget as revenues over expenses are $73,000. Any questions?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Move on to water. Water is also a seasonal fund. We're undercollected by 20%, by 4.3%. So we have a, we're undercollected in charges for services by $126,000. I compared to last year's charges for services, we were at 20%. So we're kind of where we were in same time last year. Again, it's seasonal, we're waiting for people to start watering their ponds. Expenses, also, we're over by $300, sorry? No, $102, so Mike's got the whip and he's keeping them in line. Over expended. General administration is over expended, and that has to do with fees that we paid at the beginning of the year, the membership fees for the conservancy district and ditch assessment, and those net about $55,000. We did move the cultivation fees into water revenue. Just because when the ordinance was passed, those fees were supposed to be for utility infrastructure. So we're going, we moved it from general to water. And we are, in 2018, we had nine grows, and now we're up to 11. Again, I separated out the capital outlay versus operating revenues and expenses. Same thing, the metering project. And we also have the infrastructure improvement grant through DOLA, so those are kind of offset.
Quick question?
Yes.
So for the marijuana cultivation fees, it looks like we've collected more than we budgeted for by $38,000. That's good to hear. Okay, just making sure. We're in that process. Thank you.
This results, the revenues, I mean expenses exceed revenues by $177,000. So there's a little bit of a dip in the fund balance. However, that infrastructure improvement grant, once we start getting more of that expended, we start to receive that revenue coming back from the DOLA grant. We're just starting to just get it moving. It's taken a while, but it's moving along.
And how much are we expecting from that grant again?
So about $1.2 million, I believe.
Okay. Correct. I went to it too.
If there are no questions, we can move on to gas. So the gas fund is over collected by 22.8% again, due to cold temperatures. We are over collected in charges for services by $714,000. That's 48% collection. And compared to 2018, we're at 43%. So we just had a little bit colder temperatures. We are over expended again in gas, and of course, that's relative to the gas purchases because of the colder temperatures. So those should start to balance out throughout the year. This gas fund normally balances out by around September. And revenues exceed expenses by $477,000, so that'll be an increase to fund balance. So are you liking us more? Do you like the graphs? What do you think?
I like this.
I like this.
Okay, yeah, this is great. All right.
Really popped over screen.
You liked our red, huh? Okay, on to sewer. The sewer fund is undercollected, seasonal reasonings. We're undercollected by $40,000. It checked, compared to last year, we were at 23% at this time versus this year, 22.8. So we're right on track. We are, we are under expended on expenses by $26,000. However, as always, operating expenses are usually more than revenues in sewer. It's kind of difficult. We've got to figure it out how to... Well, I think it's going to balance itself out once we're finished with that. I don't know. We've got to figure out how to catch sewer up. And revenues exceed expenses by $38,000.
Well, with the increase in our fees, you know, those are...
Yeah, it did better last year. The financials are almost ready. Mike Dixon is about ready. I'm pretty sure we have a little bit of an increase to fund balance. I'm just waiting for his final declarations. And then we, we're on to the smaller funds.
You will still have to be looked at though, because we don't really produce enough revenue to do projects there.
Right. Exactly. So this project that's going on right now, the infrastructure improvement plan, we're dipping into what we reserve sewer had. We did dump some marijuana money in there to help catch it up, and we also put a little bit of water into that fund, I think in 2017, for the sewer infrastructure grant.
So, would it be realistic to say that maybe when we did the increase of those fees, that they might have been a little bit too low?
Yes. I don't think it went up enough to deal with the projects we're looking at. For instance, sewer come line project is all going to have to be sales tax because there just isn't over here enough money to fund it.
Oh, no, that's when we went through that. I think we did some comps with other communities, and ours were really pretty low compared to a lot of other communities from what I remember, to one of the courses.
Was it Aspen?
It was Aspen or something like that. Really high.
Because they had to own their own utility company or something. They were trying to base it off.
So that would be something that maybe we as council may be faced with. You know, could we just take a second look at that?
I'm not sure if I'm correct on this, but sewer's based on water usage. And now we're updating the water meters. So maybe if we get more accurate water readings, is that correct? It's potential. There's potential that sewer revenues will increase with the water, with this metering.
The thing about it is, when would we begin to see that change possibly? Would it be this year or not?
We'll start seeing a little bit of it almost right away.
You should. I mean, once we start installing the meters, which is going to be within a couple of weeks, they're starting, we've gotten over half of the water meters in stock now, and they're going to start the install process. And how long do you anticipate that taking for completion? Oh, it's going to take almost a year to get them all covered.
Right, individual meters will come in line.
And then we just have the smaller funds, the lottery and tourism fund. They're pretty much tracking where they need to be. Revenues over expenses for lottery will have an increase to fund balance of $8,300. And then tourism also will recognize an increase of about $3,800, even though revenue, or tourism lottery tax is lower than anticipated, but that's always true the first quarter. Those two, that number will skyrocket in the second and third quarter. And then finally, the capital project spend. This one's a little bit harder. I can't really show you where we should be in our first quarter because that's not how this fund works. Are there any questions? We are over collected. I'm not, can't work it. No. We're over collected on the sales tax. That's about it, but it's just, we can't... Might have to figure out another way to present this to you because the grant money, it will come in as the projects are completed and some reimbursement. This could be two to three years out.
You know what I ask, and I'm not sure how difficult it would be, Cheryl, is when you do this format here, is to do the comps from, compare both from last year to this year. I think that would, maybe that would help. That would tell us, it would tell us where we are following in line with the previous year.
I can do that.
That would be something we need to do next time they do this presentation.
Okay. If there are no questions?
Okay, thank you. Item 3B, work session scheduling. You know, we've had some discussion over work sessions and we tried to have some at different times, and now we're trying to talk about having them. We're trying to have them prior to the meetings, and then we're having them on the evenings, on the odd weeks, or whenever we need to know. But now it kind of boils down to, it seems like that council wants to have kind of a regular schedule. I don't know if that Greg has put together a schedule, and if you want to go through that, Greg, let us know what your thoughts are and we'll have a discussion on that.
Sure. I proposed the 1:30 in the afternoon for two reasons. That was the one suggested during the department head meeting last week. And also, if you're going to hold the meetings on Tuesday, you're going to run into conflict once a month with planning and zoning if you hold it. So if you want, it doesn't really make any difference if you want to hold it in the evening and probably would just have to shift it to like... and probably just have to shift it to Monday or Sunday or maybe Thursday.
Yeah, one-thirty's kind of prime working hours.
It's tough for me.
And now it's tough for him, too.
Right.
Thursday's a day off, though.
Okay, we're talking about Tuesday.
Well, it could be, regardless, you can move it around all over the place. That was just a suggestion that came out, but I don't know, but it's tied to that. It's whatever works for you.
I recall that we changed it, because we wanted the population of the community to be able to have access to us, to hear our discussions and our, you know, our debates or arguments, whatever you want to call it, so that way they can be informed of how we came to a decision, so that way when we came on a Tuesday evening for a regular council meeting, it wasn't just like we just sat here and voted yes and no without any discussion, because we had it prior at a one-thirty PM time when most people can't be here. Now, I know the advent of the YouTube channel has made that more accessible for people, but I still would like to know that people would like to come and see us, you know, versus just watching on TV, but that again is, would be up to them. I would be in favor of having maybe once a month work sessions where we could have three hours or so, where we could have multiple topics, which take about an hour at a time. That way, we still are on the YouTube channel, as well as open to the public when they get off of work and they have the opportunity to choose to be here if they can, or they want.
I think at least initially, you're probably gonna have to have more than once a month, because there are some pretty major issues that are being talked about.
I think work sessions, because of, you know, those of you that are still working, myself, I'm pretty flexible, but as retired, but you people that have work that you're still doing, that's difficult for you, so I want to kind of rely on you guys as to what you feel comfortable with.
I would personally say that, you know, this council does need a lot of advice in work sessions. Ever since I've been sitting in our council, we always have work sessions. There's a lot more communication, and a lot more that we can learn in these work sessions. We've gotta have more than once a month, because like Mr. Sun said, there's a lot of stuff that's coming up that's gonna be very important, a big step for our city. So, you know, I, on my part, yes, you know, if we could come at six o'clock at night or whatever, and do a work session, I think everybody would be happy with that, you know, and everybody's off work, it's not pushing too much. But the most important thing is that we have to do this, no matter what we decide.
Why don't we start at five? Why don't we start at five?
We'd be in start five, whatever, start five, you know, so people...
What would work for earliest, would like four, five?
I'm very flexible.
Carlos, what would you say?
Depending on the day, Thursdays are sometimes challenging for me, but other days, I'm usually pretty flexible, unless I have another board meeting for another organization, but after four-thirty, or right around the four-thirty or five, yeah, because then if I have other things from my normal job, then I can address those and make sure that I have time to, well, to be honest, go home and clean up, because I'm a...
Well, the other thing, we need to be kind of cognizant, too, of staff, because they're gonna get involved with this, and require them, like, you know, on regular meetings, they're here, but to have them here, I think, for work sessions, you know, to keep them that extra time, if possible, and not, stay away from that as much as possible, I think would be good for staff.
Do it on Tuesdays, though, because Thursday I have purple once a month.
What if, what if we could do it to where, if we had them offsetting weeks, where we do one in the evening and then one during one-thirty PM time? I mean, I could try to work that out with my schedule, so that we were accommodating to staff for one of those days, and yet we're accommodating to the public on another, that maybe is not on the night when planning and zoning is meeting.
What time does PNC meet?
They meet, I think, Tuesday.
Five-thirty?
It's Tuesday.
If it's five-thirty, so if we plan, let's say, even let's say four o'clock, if that would work, that'll give us an hour and a half for a work session.
Really, if you recall, our work sessions, there's been very few subjects that went past the hour.
That's true. So we can kick them out of here, let's have a conversation. So anyway, Greg, why don't you work on that, go get, run a couple of scenarios by us and see what comes.
Okay. Are we hoping to only have one topic per work session or multiples? Because we may have...
Well, it depends on the issue. It depends on the issue.
Well, we've been doing single issues, and we never grow the full hour.
Yeah.
And we started at five.
Something, and while we're on the subject, I'm just gonna throw these out, I think, in fact, I've talked with Audra, and some of the work sessions that I'm looking at coming up, one is going to be working with the Creative District on the community space, with the Space Creed project. This new issue with the marijuana smoking rooms, that's gonna be coming, you know, that's something, we're gonna have to, that's gonna take a few work sessions. I know you're concerned about the marijuana distribution, revenue distribution, that may be something, I'm not sure if we've talked a lot, visiting that. We have the AMI opt-out, and I think that Mike is concerned about. I think Cheryl, I think you've talked about the utility shut-offs, and that's something that I think you're concerned about, if I'm correct. The landfill enterprise zone, that we've talked about as well. We also have the CIP election, that's coming up, whether we want to get that on this ballot, coming up or not, and that will have to be done after bed, so that's, that's a real critical one. But those are the ones that, you know, I've identified. I actually sat down with Audra and we talked about these. There may be some others that are out there that we'll have to talk about, but these are some ones that I've identified, as far as work sessions that I think we're gonna be faced with here shortly.
There might be an art-related one as well.
So write that down. So, and what I'd like to recommend to council, if there are any work sessions that you feel you need to be added to this, I think it'd be a good idea to get a list together, so that we can at least begin to plan out, you know, who comes first, who comes second, and on and on, so that way we can maybe make a plan, you know, this week, next week, and maybe we can cram two into one, like we're talking about.
Maybe each one of us prioritize what we think is the most important.
Yeah.
Do you have a list of five topics and then put them in order?
What we'll do is, I get together with Greg, we get any other items that, besides my list that I have here, shoot them out to you guys, if you guys want to add any of those.
Because we may have overlapping ideas, if we only have something on the same mind, so...
And there may be some additional things, maybe you...
That could be a changing subject for one-on-one meetings, too, is, that's, I'd change that so that the purpose of those primarily is to discuss issues that you see coming that you would want to spend a little more time on.
Well, you know, one-on-one meetings, to me, and meeting with you, Greg, I think it's very crucial, because, you know, we have an awful lot of information that, you know, we discuss, not only what's today, but maybe some history, and possible some stuff that's upcoming, and these are things that I think that, you know, some might be litigation stuff that may be coming up, that will come out eventually, but not necessarily in a work session.
I'm not sure that litigation is, but I understand.
But these are things that come up in all of our one-on-one, that's what I find out. I think it's critical that I have them.
Well, you know, Mayor, I'm in a kind of unique situation, because I'm a rookie, I'm a real rookie, with a year and a half. Rusty had a little bit of experience on planning and zoning. I use my one-on-one for Greg to mentor me and try to educate me on things that I don't know.
Sure.
So it's important.
It is.
Yeah. I mean, I feel like I keep my finger on the pulse of what's going on with my one-on-ones. And Greg relays information to me, things that are going on, status, stat eye of different things, that I think that's imperative from my ability to sit in this chair.
It's time, you know, well-used, from my perspective.
Yep, agreed. Sometimes Greg and I can't check when we're driving to La Hanta.
Got a little time, no motor is worse.
Anything else, Greg, on that topic?
No. And I thank you for discussing this, because it's definitely got to start doing this again.
Jeff Peterson from CU Boulder.
Exactly, from CU Boulder, but Jeff Peterson, I thank you, Director, for the Center for Community Innovation in Raton, and a board member of the Creative District. And so I'm here to remind everybody about an upcoming workshop. So as many of you know, CU has entered into a new five-year partnership from their business school to support the city of Trinidad and really the surrounding area. And they'll be bringing faculty to our community on a regular basis to conduct workshops and provide mentoring, one-on-one mentoring for entrepreneurs. So it's a pretty exciting opportunity for Trinidad. This is kind of a pilot program, they have been running it in a few Colorado communities, but their goal is to have rural Colorado have access to the best of that business school, which is really one of the top business schools in the country. So coming up this weekend is the kickoff for this. There's a workshop on Saturday, that's an all-day workshop at the First National Bank Galleria, and the information, the agenda and so forth is on, on the website. We're hosting all the information here at centerci.org. The agenda, the bios of the instructors, and how this program was born are all on that website there. And then importantly, and also I'm here tonight is, I'm looking for some recruits or some volunteers for Friday night. So Friday night, we have lined up, there's a, at five-thirty to six-thirty, the participants of the workshop will be meeting with Eric and Vista, the two faculty from CU, and kind of working up for Saturday. And then from, starting at six-thirty, we'll have a public reception for the CU faculty, really a welcome to Trinidad, to CU. So I've been hitting the streets and inviting all the bankers and accountants and business folks, and trying to invite folks to show up Friday night to give a warm welcome to CU. So the thought here, in going over the program with the CU staff this morning by phone, is on about seven o'clock, just to have a brief introduction from a council member, a mayor, city manager, whoever wants to volunteer, a little five-minute hello, welcome to Trinidad, and we'll turn over the floor to CU, and then they'll walk through in more detail about, you know, how this program was born, and why they're in Trinidad, and why they were excited to come here, et cetera. They really are excited to be here. So I don't know who can make it on council Friday night, and who might be interested in...
I'll check my schedule, I do need a phone number for you to...
Okay, absolutely.
Which phone?
And you said that's at seven PM when you need volunteers from us?
Yeah, so we're gonna, we'll kick off the reception at six-thirty, and just have a little mixer for a little while, and then I think at seven o'clock, it's time for people to show up, and we'll just have a very brief, you know, welcome, formal welcome for CU to the community.
And that's at bricks, right?
And that's at bricks, yep. And then the Saturday workshop is at the Galleria. Please, if you know anybody that's a new business, or a business that maybe is looking for a spark of innovation, this is a good opportunity to attend that workshop on Saturday. And one other quick little update, there is the boot camp that we ran, the center ran with creative startups from Santa Fe. So this is a program that was funded both by the city of Trinidad and the city of Raton. So in this partnership, we, we started with sixteen businesses, eight from Trinidad and eight from Raton, through this boot camp of entrepreneurial development. We had, we had five survivors from Trinidad, and about five from Raton. And it, some of those that fell out were really more for personal reasons, that something happened, not that they just were overwhelmed by the content, but exciting stuff. It was that last day when we had all the group together, and just asked everybody how they felt to that day after those four weeks, just to a person, it was, they felt a remarkable change. So we have some, some new startups coming, some folks that you may already know that have been working like Naaman and Mo that make the hand pies at the farmer's market, they have really exciting plans to go regional with their, with their product, and so a lot of fun stuff came out of that boot camp. So our next phase with this is we're recording, we're doing video recordings of the elevator pitches, the old business pitch of each business. And then we'll be posting that on our website, and having like a big Facebook and social media campaign to let everybody know who was participating, and have people kind of vote. And the Creative District and the center have each sponsored five hundred dollars for prize money. And then the other important prize money is from Inbank. So Inbank has offered prize money as well, and so entrepreneurs will sit down one-on-one across from the bankers, and have to have that wonderful experience to pitch their idea in front of, in front of a shark, you know, Joey will do it on this side, and then Robert Jones over in Raton for the Raton people. So some fun yet to do, and then as we get the awards awarded, we'll bring them back here, and we'll, we'll hand over the checks here in front of council.
Great.
Okay. Right, that's it.
Thanks, Jeff.
One last question, is this for people who are looking to start a business, or people who are already in a business, or...
So, you know, it's a bit, it's an introductory level thing, so it is probably most oriented to somebody new, thinking about a business, but they really are, they have success with people who maybe have a business now, but, you know, a little refresher and a little innovative spark, and the other thing I would, I would really, that I always emphasize with people is, so this is a five-year commitment from CU to our community. And these two instructors, these two professors are kind of assigned to Trinidad to be our, our input into CU system. So the sooner businesses, entrepreneurs can build the relationships with Eric and Vista, the more they'll leverage this relationship with CU, right? So they can call, they can have their emails, and they can have their phone numbers and say, oh, I really am up against something, can you find a resource for me to untangle this? And that's what they're, that's part of what's built into this program that makes it really valuable.
One last question.
Yep.
If for some reason someone can't make it to this initial meeting, when will be the next one that'll be happening, so they can plan?
That, that is a little bit in the works, it's about every semester, so in the fall, they'll, they'll come down with another program, and, and they sort of build the more depth and more focus through the five years, so the topic gets more complicated and more in-depth as they, as they work more and more with the entrepreneurs. And that's why I encourage people to really get started now and build those relationships, because they're gonna keep delivering deeper content through this process.
Do you have any idea what kind of participation we're gonna have Saturday?
So we, we, I had ten sign, well, I have about ten sign-ups right now, and we're just, I'm just pushing hard this week, everything, we were in the paper yesterday, we're in the fine print, and we're on Facebook, and just doing everything we can to knock on doors and make a lot of personal invitations, is what I'm doing right now, to get people to come Saturday. It's such a good opportunity, I just really want to get the word out, because this is, this is CU faculty, these guys are, this is serious music pop show folks.
Well, we have ten already that are interested, that's a pretty good start from the outside.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we had thirty-two applicants for the boot camp between Raton and Trinidad, so that, that was pretty surprising, like, that's a lot of new, there's some, there's some, there's some things cooking.
One last question for me, the registration fee, is that per person or per entity?
Uh, good question, we've never, done it that. So we have a, we've been doing it per person, really, but there is a discount, so we can get the price down to thirty-five bucks. So Startup Colorado's been a big supporter of this, and they've sponsored some of the people so far, and then CU has some money reserved, so they're gonna be sponsoring some attendees as well. So a good number of them so far have been taking advantage of the sponsorships, in fact.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll see you Friday night.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I just wanted to address some comments that were made here a couple weeks ago, because the one thing I've learned in my seven years in Trinidad is if you don't address something, it becomes the truth, whether or not it's true. So I thought I would take the opportunity to come, since I was able to listen to some of these comments that were made about the district and just... of these comments that were made about the district and just set the, get the facts straight. First off, as far as, Councilmember Matei said he's been in public safety forty-one years. And I started, actually before he did, I started in law enforcement in seventy-eight, which would be forty-one years. I've got a long career in law enforcement, fire and EMS. And the first thing he said was that the ambulance district is very wealthy. And, you know, I even had to have a conference with John Tucker at the hospital, who was under the impression that the county was subsidizing the ambulance district to the tune of $200,000 a month. And where that comes from, I have no idea, but you're talking about someone who's running the hospital that you would think that, that not a rumor that would get to his level and be believed. But the fact is that since 2010, and that probably shocked some people, the district is down fifty-two percent in tax revenue. So in 2010, the district collected $1,859,110 in tax revenue. And this year we're projected at $956,000. So we're, you know, more than fifty percent down, better than a couple of years ago when it was $914,000, bumped back up. But we're still more than fifty percent down when you're talking about ambulances costing about $250,000, close to $300,000 by the time you put equipment in them. That money goes pretty quickly. So a lot of our, most of our revenue now comes from fee for service for the transports that we do. I did wanna hand out some things. I think I made enough. So we, we're, I think we're set straight on the ambulance district is very wealthy. We've drawn down more than a million dollars in our reserves. So that's how wealthy we are, is that we're actually operating off our reserves and that's why that money is sitting there because I don't spend it. Especially, we bought that property to put up a building that's actually in radio range, but we haven't done anything with it because I don't wanna spend that money. Because to me, number one thing is to make sure ambulances come out on the streets and answer calls.
Could you answer one question though? Do you tell us why such a drastic drop in revenue?
I just think it's due to the oil and gas being gone, because I can remember getting, my first year here, we had a check for several hundred thousand dollars from Pioneer that came in. So I remembered that that was, that was a major thing for us. And when the oil and, the oil and gas revenues went to zero, we just, the bottom fell out of everything. So that seems to be what's hurting us right now. The other statement was the ambulance district crews are armed, the ambulance district crews are not armed. The district doesn't provide any weapons to the crews whatsoever. We do have five members of the district who are members of the sheriff's office posse. And we train with the sheriff's office on active shooters and rescue task force operations. And one of the things I'll write, that very front page that I gave you is the Tactical Ed, which is the official magazine of the National Tactical Officers Association. And I circled that, there are articles, those are their monthly articles and it says TMS, that's tactical EMS. So actually, part of tactical EMS is part of, of the EMS component is part of the law enforcement component. And we're working with that because we learned in Columbine that people bleed to death. I just went to a conference in Dallas where there was a physician that was working in Pittsburgh when the synagogue shooting happened. And he said if it hadn't been for the people, the law enforcement medics going in and putting tourniquets on people, nobody would have survived. And that's a guy who was in ER treating those patients. So that's what we focused on for the past probably five years, is having a component that if there's something going on in the courthouse, traditionally, no EMS would go in until law enforcement has somebody in custody and it's what they call a cold zone. We're gonna go in and we're gonna start getting people out, which is why we have several members that when they are activated, fall under the color of the sheriff's office and they are armed. Other than that, they're not, they don't go out and call as armed, they're not wearing sidearms, they're just medics. So that's, I hope that kind of straightens out that confusion.
I have a question. Someone brought to my attention, I don't know if this is true, the vehicles themselves have weapons inside of them, is that correct?
No, they have a cabinet in there that can store a rifle, so that is the, and a handgun. So for a member of the rescue task force is on duty, they can lock their stuff up. So they're not armed. It's locked in the vehicle so that if they get called to something, they have their equipment with them that they can respond. So that, that's what it...
But they have to bring their equipment, lock it in there and then go?
Right, so they're not taking it on calls. It's in the, the five people who, well, actually there's three that are out on the street because I'm one and Dave Moreno's the other. So there's three medics, Rob Bukavak, you know, used to be an officer here, David De Trey and, but we've got five, five hosts that are, that have been training with the sheriff's office. And we train pretty regularly. We were training with PD for a while. We had the old Coke building that we used to training probably about eight months ago where we were doing different scenarios, working with the, with the city police also. So I think it's a good thing if we have something in a school, if we have something, especially if it's out in the county where you don't have a bunch of officers that are gonna respond, a bunch of deputies, to have a component that can go out there and assist, at least start getting people out without waiting for law enforcement to respond, to get somebody contained so that then we can go in to start taking people out because they will bleed to death. We even implemented a new policy where, I don't know if you saw in the paper, where we gave the fire department two throw bags, we call them, that have, they have ten tourniquets, they have the blood-stopping, the bleeding, coagulating gars, they have special dressings for sucking chest wounds. And we gave those to the fire department because the idea is if we get there and we, someone's gonna go in and rather than just first come, first served, we're gonna go in and start looking for the people who are the most severely injured and put tourniquets on and try and save those lives and get people out. If people can crawl, if they can walk, just start getting them out.
Unfortunately, we've not had any mass use in this area, thank God, and so forth. But how many times would you say that you have arrived on a scene before law enforcement, actual law enforcement?
Well, law enforcement doesn't go to most of our scenes. So a lot of times we'll show up on a scene, like if an overdose or something, and then we'll call for law enforcement. So if there's no, if there's no regular call, sometimes law enforcement calls us to be with them when something happens. But a good percentage of the time, we actually show up on a call and then we're asking for law enforcement to come and assist us because we're noticing something that someone's either getting behind or something's happening and we're backing off. And we just, we've got a medic that's going to court on the nineteenth, I think it is, because he was assaulted by a patient here in town. So, and a couple of the officers were assaulted as well.
Mr. Moynihan, it's been like nine minutes. I know you've had a number of questions from council, I'm sorry. Let you go for a couple more minutes.
Okay. The, it said we wear flat jackets identifying ourselves as deputies, and this is just one of the jackets that they're issued. And I think you can tell, they say EMS, there's no, nothing that says that they're deputies.
Why is it I'm made to do this, but I have to do this? Because I have seen, I saw one the other day where I saw an EMS on one side, a sheriff on the other side or something like that, a t-shirt or something like that.
I don't know if you saw sheriff, they do have an EMS, some of them have a flexible EMS badge.
It was, it was, you know, in big letters on the front and the back. One side was EMS, the other side sheriff or something like that.
I don't know where, where it would be, if it was one of my persons, no. I don't know anyone that has a vest that has the big sheriff on it that we, that we have.
It says deputy or deputy or something like that.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have, we don't have anyone that has the big, these are our vests, so we don't even have the ones that have the, the big panels on it.
You might check, you might check into that because they are out there.
Well, I see them every day. The, as far as the board members, we have one, you know, sheriff to see us, we call him that, but he's really not the sheriff anymore. Derek is, Derek neveret. Nick Materano is up at Primero School at Kathy Bueno, who's a nurse, and Joe Martinez, who is a Rhode and Bridge guy at the county. And then I don't even understand how the, the topic of the ambulance district came up in funding of the jail camera. And I just think that if somehow someone could create some sort of nexus between the ambulance district and funding jail cameras, I just don't, I don't know where that came from. But I just wanted to address it to make sure that the facts are out and, you know, everybody knows where I am. My number's out there, call me if you have any questions. I know there was, I got a call that we weren't doing any transports from the hospital and I, we put in a vehicle, we do so many transports from the hospital, we bought a vehicle just for that. It went into service, I think, four weeks ago and it's got 7,000 miles on it. And that's just in transport. So we're doing a ton of transports out of the hospital. So where do rumors come from? I don't know, but I just thought I would dispel some of the myths.
Thank you, sir. Creative District update?
Thank you, Ms. Ringer, councilmembers. We just wanted to update you on where we are at the moment. And I know that Phil brought up also that there would be a work session coming up, very Creative District. The first item that I brought to you is the resolution that was passed in May of 2013 when we first applied for Creative District status and were approved at that point in time. We would like to ask that that be updated, that we get together and work on a new resolution that confirms that relationship and adds space to create to the relationship with the city. This is now six years old, so that's the first item. And then I distilled a seven-page list of our dates that we have highlighted since 2010. And this is, I could get it down to a page and a half. And I dealt mostly with the major dates and events and accomplishes, accomplishments that we have had since we first started this process. And again, this is taking away from a seven-page list of such things. And I left it mostly with Creative District and what we've done in terms of the Art Space relationship as well. So you can look through that. And then a simple Venn diagram that puts the City of Trinidad, horizontal Trinidad, Creative District and Art Space in place and how we overlap and in what ways we work together between these three entities. We will have very shortly a completed outline of how these three entities fall in place with one another and what they have to offer for the City of Trinidad. But this is just a basic Venn diagram outline right now. And then also the, this comes mostly from Art Space, photos of the three buildings as they stand currently, and then the latest architect's rendering of what the Main Street facility will end up looking like. And Art Space has a Trinidad project site that you can rent to from their Art Space website. And a list of our current board of directors with contact information, our mission statement and vision statement for Theory of Change. We were the first organization in the city that went through the council of government's Theory of Change training. We spent about sixteen hours doing that. And we're working from that in coordination with the 2017 comprehensive set, a plan that the city put together. So cross-referencing those to make certain that we're matching as many things as we can in the comprehensive plan with what we found and determined in our Theory of Change training was most important to us. And then lastly, we received a grant from Creative Industries to bring Creativity Lab of Colorado to Trinidad, met with the mayor, city council manager and Audra Garrett and board with the exception of one person who had another obligation she could not get out of. So we spent about four hours going through steps that could be taken to implement and solidify the relationship and working agreement between the City of Trinidad and our Creative District. So a number of things here that were recommended and we are totally in favor of those moving forward. On number one, that's, we had a list of five recommendations from this session. And it's to establish a voting board representative of the city. And especially now with Tara gone, she was our city liaison. And we have voted to and requested of and had a positive response to that Audra as that person. And we'll need to change bylaws to make that a voting member of our board, which we are planning to do. Scope of support from the city, availability of funding, terms and conditions for the city to authorize us to lead planning for space to create and potentially management of the community space in that project. And then number five, prerequisites and ongoing metrics. And Audra and Walter are working on that currently to develop a spreadsheet of data collection points. And once that's all put together, that can be used by any number of groups, including the city. It will have, goodness, there was what, a page and a half, I think, outline of data points that would be helpful. First, for Creative District, as we file our quarterly and then annual reports to the state. So the annual report is due here in another month and it's very extensive. So there are so many data points that currently are not being collected that could be helpful to all of the boards and commissions as well as our Creative District and the city in general. So that's being worked on now and is underway. So that's a big part of this. One thing that we did find from this session was that of twenty-three Creative Districts currently certified in the state, seventeen have 501(c)(3) status and a working agreement, a formal agreement with whatever their jurisdiction might happen to be, whether it's local municipality, whether it's a business improvement district or some other entity under which they, with whom they work, where their funding generally comes from. So having a hybrid agreement between a 501(c)(3) and a local city government is something that we would certainly like to pursue and, and have come to pass. We think that the ability to continue to write for grants that are separate from city funding or, or membership or donations, whatever that happens to be as a funding source, is really important to continue movement forward. So that's pretty much the proposal, are looking through these five steps. And hopefully, this will be among one of the first that is considered for your work sessions so that we can get this on the way.
Where do we stand on the stakeholder?
I just talked to Tara yesterday and she's going to send me the initial list that she had put together. There may be some changes in that because we've had people move to town from someplace else who've been really working hard and might be important to include in this group. But that's kind of what we've put together so far. And just as far as space to create is concerned, our Creative District has been involved since the announcement by Governor Pickenmuth that Trinidad would be the demonstration project for space to create. I believe there were seventeen people, including councilmembers and our Creative District group and citizens of the community who went to Loveland when that announcement was made. We have planned public and stakeholder meetings throughout this last number of years since that was announced as a project in Trinidad. We partnered with Art Space, with feasibility studies that were held early on and tenant contests. We have been the collector of numerous emails from people interested in moving to Trinidad to live in those project, in the, in the project. We collaborated with Art Space for the... We collaborated with art space for the market survey. So we have all of those studies and contacts and such available to us that we've been collecting. We also have two Facebook pages, both our creative district and space to create Facebook pages that we continually post on to keep the public up to date. And then also our creative district website, which is in the process of being updated and revamped with some really cool stuff. We have Dean Sneed, a local artist who has done work here in Trinidad and had an exhibition at the history museum about a year ago. And he's done some really great graphics that combine the history, some of the older photographs of Trinidad and today's Trinidad. And they're very exciting. So that's all being updated, to have a stronger presence and be able to keep everyone in the community more updated. We also have developed very strong working relationships with Vetra Foundation, Colorado Creative Industries and the Office of Economic Development, History Colorado and Historical Funds, Department of Local Affairs and Art Space. We have, we seem to be the connection point between community and the city and art space. We get calls constantly, you know, what about this, what about that? Did I miss the application for living space and space to create, that sort of thing? So we're kind of that in-between that works with and for all of the entities, which is helpful certainly to the public to keep them aware, but also takes some burden off of the city. Again, since Tara's gone, there's not really one person who would be the contact for all of these questions and inquiries and such. We've had some interest in opportunities for space to create, for rental information and possible garage entity and that sort of thing. So we're collecting those bits of information now. And also as a 501(c)(3), we have the ability, as I mentioned before, to write for grants. We've received a couple of grants from the state. We put on the poetry festival and music festival last year. The city generously afforded us the ability to hold the second annual poetry festival, which was probably triple what the first one was last year. And yet now, it's so popular that the open mic for poetry and prose readings at Los Angeles Grill is continuing through the end of the year. So some really exciting things on the literary front there.
Why don't we do this? It sounded like you have a lot of information there that.
I don't have one.
Pertains to a work session.
Yes, okay, great. So that was the point, was just to give you some basic information. And we'll have more detailed information on all of these points. So if you can schedule and let us know, we will be available for you.
The one part that I was gonna say, and I guess Greg or Audra is working on that resolution update at some point, that would be the one item that probably stands out at this point.
I have a question too for staff. Is there any potential conflict that we have with the charter pertaining to our board and commission section that isolates one entity as a 501(c)(3) or is it vague where it should be an issue?
It creates a different relationship, but it's not uncommon because creative district is really an arts-based economic development entity. And it's very typical for cities to have outside organizations deal with economic development. It's probably more common than having staff. So it's, I come up with lots of examples where communities work with economic development as a separate organization.
Okay, I'm just hoping that if we're to proceed with this, we don't have to have something put to the voters to allow it as a change to the charter.
As far as I think with OEDIT, Margaret, I'd clear that up here.
Okay.
This is not a change to the charter, it's just working with an organization. And economic development is, as all of you have said, is a primary function of things that we need to be working for.
And that's in everything that we've dealt with too from the very beginning. And again, we fall under the Office of Economic Development at the state level, so. Okay, thank you very much. I was a forward to your inferment.
And this group was on the agenda. People were looking at me like, why don't you say something as she was on the agenda? So the president applauding, thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Got a couple of letters here. One is from the Copax County Board of Commissioners, Derek Trinidad City Council. Copax County was awarded the TIGR-9 grant in two thousand and seventeen. However, due to the uncertainty of Amtrak Southwest Chiefs future, the project was delayed. We are now ready to proceed with TIGR-9 and appreciate your continued support and pledge of the twelve thousand five hundred dollars that we had appropriated some time back, so.
I have a report on that.
What's that?
I have a report on this at the end of the meeting.
Okay, good. Since you have any questions, we can call this number if you ever want to have that number. Thank you. I'm sorry, okay? We've got a thing here from the Los Angeles County Fair Market Sale by our social. And it says, find out how you can support Los Angeles County youth participating in the livestock market sale. There's two drinks, tickets and hors d'oeuvres. June the thirteenth through the ninth, June the thirteenth, two thousand nineteen at six p.m. at the R. Mitchell. So that's coming. And I have a letter here from a lady, I'm not gonna read the letter to you because it's quite lengthy. But what it amounts to is she has issues with, I guess, a neighbor's dog that is barking all the time.
Welcome to my world.
And she, she said she would like to put a timer on the barking for dogs.
We actually have it, we have a noise alarm and it's a man time. It went heavy barking for lack of a better term, wildly once a night.
So anyway, it was just more of a concern with the barking. We'll all do, we'll all give this letter to Greg and he can talk to the code and voice for the animal.
Okay.
Does she give a name and anything?
Yes, the lady's name was, it looks like it's Gola Loplin at fifteen twelve Eve Street. Okay, that's the lady.
That was where it was, my dog.
That's right.
You have neighbors.
But she just wants people to take more control of their animals as well.
Well, you always use animals off leash. You guys have real trouble with.
I think we'd rather have that to be a work session, not just.
And for council, I believe every one of us got this information about the Royal Funders Learning Network on June the twenty-fourth, so pay attention to that, if you would please. That is all I have as far as any additional stuff or the additions communications. Okay, on to item five, consent agenda approval. Item eight, approval of the regular meeting minutes in May the twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Item B, approval of special event permit, mall, vineyards and spirituals supplied by the Trinidad, Los Angeles County Chamber of Commerce at one fifty North Commercial Street. Parking lot at Commercial and L Street for June the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth Saturday Trio Festival. Got representative here? That's it. Approval of the bills, two million, one hundred ninety thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-one cents. Approval of the payroll, June the first, two thousand nineteen through June the fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, three hundred forty thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-four cents, which is part of the actual approval of the bills. Good afternoon motion, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, okay. Go ahead, call one please.
Benato?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We have item six, we have no public hands at this time. Or item seven, no unfinished business. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Appointment of Colorado Municipal League Executive Board Election Voting Representative. Who's going to the?
I will be there.
I'm not going.
Is Rusty, is Rusty going to go?
I don't think so. So I guess why you called direct.
And then, just to bring up too, I also received.
Those staff members are going?
I also received a call from CERSA and they asked if Councilman Lopez would show up to register a Trinidad vote because they're trying to make as many cities as possible to show up to the business.
Okay. And that's on Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Did you get a time on that? I didn't see anything.
The first thing starts at ten thirty, but I think the business meeting starts at noon or something like that.
My best to speak to get their counsel.
I guess, good afternoon motion on that, please?
I'm looking to reapply Councilman Carlos Lopez to the CML Executive Board Election Voting Representative.
Call one please.
Benato?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Can I vote on that? I recuse myself, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Rico?
Yes. Item eight B. Item eight B is extraterritorial water tap request by Richard Suwai at thirteen eight fifty US Highway three fifty. Could have a motion on that, please?
Some move?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Mike, you have something for us on that?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, thank you. As you may or may not have not known, that with the water restrictions that we had placed, there was a moratorium on extraterritorial water taps. Well, since we recently lifted those, I had accepted several, you'll see two applications on the agenda tonight. And I'm just bringing them forward now for your approval. It's my recommendation to approve both, but we could start with Mr. Suwai's application. He submitted this in October. And the location is actually the old Keller Glass Building. As part of the application, it, one of the stipulations is he agrees to annexation if and when the city decides to petition that area, he agrees to it. I have no other information unless council asks questions. I know Mr. Suwai is here. It's on, yeah, Main Street, one sixty, just past the Toyota, it's the Keller Glass Building. Right down the hill from you. Yeah. Kind of right next door to the USDA offices there. But it's outside city limits, bad location. That's why the extraterritorial water tap. No, no question.
No, I don't have any, long as everything's on the up and up and I've read the documents, it looks like paperwork's filed correctly and.
That's correct.
Fine, or I'm not, but fees are paid?
Fees are not paid yet, they will be paid upon approval.
Okay, then I must.
Or before we make, you know, the tap, all fees will have to be paid.
So how is water getting that building down if they don't?
They haul water, I believe, they don't have a tap. The same as the Terci's building, Malcolm Water Sports Toyota, they haul water.
I don't know if I could ask you, what do you plan to do in there or what's going on in there? What do you plan to do with the building or whatever?
It's already leased in the place.
Yep.
It's leased, I believe, western, western civil is in there.
Oh, okay, okay. And they haul water to that now?
Yep. Squiggle?
I have no question.
Have no questions, call one please?
Benato?
This is half inch water right now.
This is one inch.
One inch, okay, yeah, okay.
Riego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item C, extraterritorial water tap request by William and Phyllis Masuroni at thirteen zero zero four. Rubia Court, could have a motion, please?
Full move.
Second. Second. This is basically the same scenario. The Masuronis live above Cougar Canyon and there's a water main down Bat Masterson Drive to favorite court. When that was, that whole subdivision was planted, they were granted an easement for utilities and access to their lot from Bat Masterson through that development up to their, their lots that are in Emerald Vista. Their request is for an inch and a half water tap. That is mostly for volume and elevation because they're up above and getting the volume and pressure to them. They're requesting an inch and a half tap.
Is that normal?
Uh, normal.
Under the circumstances?
For the circumstances, yes, because of the pressure and the volume to get up there. It's for one, one hole.
Do they have other additions that they're planning at this point in time that they can?
Uh, the Masuronis are here if you want to.
We don't have any plans to put any houses up there. It's just that we've tried to drill two wells, got six thousand dollars in wells that don't produce any water. And we've been hauling for twenty-five years, but now we border Cougar Canyon. The city property is right there and I'm actually putting a rope through the easement the city granted us. So that's why we're planning on putting the water line there. And we do have to run it two thousand feet, that's why the inch and a half tap. Because we just don't, we're not gonna get any pressure, volume in that business.
Thank you. Questions? No? Okay?
Call one please?
Benato?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item A D, consideration of contract with Inland, intake rehabilitation project and North Lake. Could have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second? Second? Mike?
So as you can see from my council communication, I gave you kind of a summary of how long this has been going on. We started in August of two thousand fifteen with the inspection with Inland. At the time, their company was called Inland Portable Services. They are specialized in diving and calmering, you know, the lines and checking our dam, North Lake, down to depths of sixty to eighty feet. They dive down and check it well. They went down, set cameras down the intake lines based on recommendations from the state Office of Dam Inspection, Dam Safety and found that there, those lines, they've been in there since the nineteen sixties, I believe. They're, they're showing they're wearing checks. So with that camera information, we hired RJH, council approved, in twenty sixteen approved the contract agreement with RJH, our consultants for North Lake Dam. They went through many scenarios. In two thousand seventeen, they decided that the best action would be to use compressed fit lining. There's slip lining, there's HDP pipe. What they're gonna do with this is compress actual poly pipe. They run it through like a cleaner washer, for lack of a better term, they squeeze the pipe down. They pull it through the existing pipe and then it expands back to its normal diameter and it fits into the pipe, so. The design was completed in March of, in July of two thousand seventeen and I'm sorry, in July of two thousand seventeen, we brought Inland Portable back in because the platforms in the tower had to be rebuilt for the safe installation of this compressed fit lining. Twenty eighteen, February two thousand eighteen, RJH, our engineering consultant submitted to the state dam inspection. We did not get approval after many iterations back and forth of this innovative application. We didn't get approval until June two thousand eighteen, which didn't allow enough time to do the project then, so. Here we are today, they submitted their proposal at an amount of three hundred thousand dollars. It is not something that I could go out to bid. There's plenty of people in the area that do this. Inland Marine has been on the project since two thousand fifteen. So it's my recommendation, we go with them to install this lining. Inland Marine has been on the project since twenty fifteen, so it's my recommendation, we go with them to install this lining. Questions from council?
How's it going? You and Mike are worried about water and the situation we're in now is doing pretty good. With this, with this construction going on at the dam, uh, there's no drainage of water that's going to have to come out of there, drop to the, the water level in the lake now, say, like we did, I don't know, back in twenty fifteen or whatever.
Correct, no, this, the reason this scenario came up is so that we didn't have to drain down the water, didn't have to do any excavation, we're actually, uh, inserting the pipe within the pipe. Level stays the same. And the operation
The first time we did, we ought to drop that big?
We had to drop to level ten, ten feet almost, yeah, which was, yeah, it's huge.
So we don't have to mess around with any type of water coming out of there?
No, we do not. We'll still be able to utilize the treatment because there's, there's actually three pipes in the, uh, different elevations in the dam. We plugged the top one years back because it collapsed. There's two that we're doing with this project.
And you said that in the reading, they have these butterfly valves, so that way they can close it off, so they can go in there and do the pipe lining?
Correct.
And then they go to the next one, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And do that?
Correct.
I read your stuff.
Any questions?
No, none really. No.
I just have one really silly question. Um, is the efficiency of the, of the water flow increased when we do something like that?
Um, I would say somewhat because of the, uh, friction loss in the existing pipe. It's old, it's, uh, it's got tuberculosis and corrosion on it, but they're, uh, they're big pipes. It's, it's, it will help because of the smooth surface on the new pipe.
I think you've answered my question, when was about to be, now that you've answered it, this might took four years or whatever. Yeah, when they're going to start?
Um, they're, they're ready to start, as a matter of fact, uh, they wanted to start right away and they wanted to decide to go and said, no, can't do that, we gotta run it by council, get your approval, so. It's about a thirty day
Thirty-one day schedule?
Yeah.
Can we, can we get them to stay at Monument Lake?
Um, I think they will, as a matter of fact, um, part of the state contract in our engineering, uh, design was that the state engineer wants our certified engineer on site while they do this. Um, they, last time they were there, they stayed at Monument Lake.
It's a good place to stay.
Right, it's right there.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's another conversation on that, call it home, please?
Bernardo?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
I have made D, first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property owned by the city of Trinidad to Isaac and Ibrina Beta. Setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance, is that to June eighteenth, is that from this date?
Correct.
At six P M? Could I have someone introduce, please? And could I have a motion?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion, Mike, does some more information on that? Um, just, uh, Mayor and Members of Council, just what's in your packet and, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Data are in the audience, but, um, I don't know, if you looked at the maps, we have this little strip of land that's in between two parcels that they own. Um, over the years, they've actually installed a modular on, on the parcel. Um, I guess recently they went to, uh, to the bank and it was discovered that the city owned this twenty foot by hundred and twenty-five foot parcel, it's in the county, it's back, uh, over behind Big R. The, um, commissioner's back in seventy-one, I think I included that deed in your packet. At that time, their practice was if they had a, a bunch of properties on the tax rolls that nobody was paying and nobody came forward to claim or pay the taxes on, they deeded them over to the city or Urban Renewal at the time, and we tried to do something with them. We've had this property since nineteen seventy-one, have not done anything with it. As a matter of fact, uh, when they came in, we said, are you sure we own this? Uh, we had to do our research, and, you know, we do have this, so, um, by our charter and everything, we have to dispose the property by ordinance. Um, my suggestion and with the attorney's help here, um, we wrote up a quick claim deed just to deed it over. I, total of council sees any value, but to me, it's best to deed over and get it back on the tax rolls, at least for the county property taxes. It's been a tax exempt for since nineteen seventy-one.
They quit deeds quite a few.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
No questions?
I think we should put Mike's office right in.
No, I have no question.
And there are no dollar value exchanging here, it's just?
No, I think the quick claim says one dollar, another is going to be valuable considerations because it's, it has to have something, but
Consideration?
Yeah. Okay? Call it home.
Bernardo?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
So just real quick, from Mr. and Mrs. Data, that's the first reading of an ordinance, the second reading will be
June eighteen.
June eighteen, eighteen, so, um, you have to go through one more step. Elevering, and then that same night, if the reading goes okay, then we actually do a vote or approval.
All right. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Out of nine, council reports.
Have nothing.
Have nothing?
Have nothing. I did go to the Triggers Home opening Saturday night, it was very well attended. It's pretty loud.
Um, I too went to the Triggers Home opening weekend, but I didn't go Saturday, I went to Sunday. Um, it's really nice to see baseball back in Trinidad again. I'd like to give a big kudos to Ken Schultz and all of her people and efforts for putting together, uh, start of hopefully another great year of local professional baseball here in Trinidad. I think it's nice to have options in our community for people to do things, it's very family oriented. I think they had like three hot dogs for kids, so there was quite a few there. Um, this past Friday, we, uh, the youth club also had our little kickoff party, it's our third barbecue we've had now, so we're starting our third year, which is good to know. Uh, and we have sixty spots available for summer programming, of which we have seven spots left open for the community, so. If you know of any families that have children that need summer programming, we have it. Um, our hours of operation this summer are from seven A M. to six P M. We've changed it a little bit to accommodate parents and their work schedules because sometimes getting there at ten A M., which we did before, was challenging. So we can open at seven A M. now, so that way they can get them before they have to be at work at, say, eight A M. So that's, uh, that's it that I can think of right now.
Mike and I went to Springfield for the Opera Board meeting, and Governor Hollis just signed seven bills that set targets for renewable energy and penalties on fossil fuels, and it doesn't affect Trinidad at all because we're municipal utility, and we're also part of a joint action agency, which is our one. But it does have a big impact on the trystate. So it kind of puts us in a realm of kind of unfathomable, unfathomable risks. Just say that three times fast. So anyway, we're going to other bidders right now, and we'll see, see what we do.
And I think you signed those bills that, uh, you know, the renewable energy by twenty forty, right?
Yeah, by twenty forty, they are, they are going to impose a social cost on fossil fuels. And our preliminary calculation of it was very high, four cents per kilowatt hour. It was rough math in the room, but that's what Anyway, let's see, I'll take
So between now and twenty forty, we can get a whole new bunch of legislators up there and change it.
Yeah.
So.
Well, they're going to be subject to P U C, you know, and regulations, so. It's very complicated and it's really hard to, to decipher what's going on.
What is it going to do to the coal industry in general?
Okay.
For usage, not for
For color up.
Wow, not for producing, though?
No, no, just
For usage.
All of the plants will be shut down, is what my, my guess is.
Weren't they trying to pivot, though, into a natural gas, uh, fed electrical system? Like, the power plants were supposed to be natural gas fed versus coal during the Obama administration?
You talking about the Lamar Repowering Project?
No, not that one, but there was, I thought, an initiative done in the Obama administration where he was trying to get all
Oh, the clean, the clean coal program, that we were, we were not off the ground.
Where they were trying to convert coal-fired, uh, power plants into natural gas-fired, and I think they converted the one in Colorado Springs to that as a part of that program, I think so. The one right down there by Motor City?
I think it's still coal.
There are a lot of coal things going by there all the time, yeah.
I thought that was one of them, did you remember?
I don't have that.
You remember them? Okay. Uh, do you have, I, uh, went to the meeting last week, the work session for the tourism work, and I know that the victim has been, uh, their grant application. And, uh, as they recommended that night, that they went through the process of a complete revision of the grant application, which seems to be a lot more usable in a way that they grade how they'll, um, give out grants. So they're, they're making some headway. Uh, the one thing that was also rec, I recommended to them, and I got an email from an actual council member, uh, about more local and regional advertising, because I think that's something that, uh, seems to be lacking. So we need to have a little bit more of local advertising, as well as maybe regional, maybe like, uh, uh, Raton, uh, Lana, well, called, to Walsenburg in that area. So some closer proximities to Trinidad, rather than just reaching Bah to, who knows where?
They have a, they're, that night that they came to talk to us during the work session, they have this thing in the ordinance that you cannot advertise within fifty mile radius of Trinidad. But that's kind of silly because now that all these newspapers are online, it's, it's comprehensible to believe that these people in all over the country, all over the world can look at them.
Is that part of the ordinance?
That's what they said.
Yeah, they did. But we, I, I thought it was a little bit jumbled, but that's what I took away from
That's what, that's what they, because I asked Mr. Chris directly, and he said, yes, it's in the ordinance.
Check on that, never remember that.
Yeah, but less than I were talking, you know, we had some regional guides recently that were, like, attached to the public chief and the Warfino World, and
Because in the best case, it does create an issue.
Yeah, and then, but there was nothing in there about Trinidad.
And there never was.
And I never
Never is. And that was something that was brought to my attention, which I brought to their attention as well. And it's the easiest get for the advertising dollar I can ever think of. Sorry, I know it's not my turn, I don't mean to interrupt, but it's, and I think that would be a good work session, is, is tourism. And, you know, I, I know that's a, you know, kind of a crusade of life, but I, I think that may be a good work session for council. Would you still agree?
Uh, I also attended, uh, two weeks ago, uh, B and I attended that Fall Warrior Event at Fort Carson, which was, that's the second time I've been there, and that's kind of neat to see, and they, uh, recognized and honored four soldiers that had died in battle business in the past year, so, um, it's kind of sad and having our buddies be recognized. Uh, also last week, they had the, uh, Fort Carson, uh, Fort Carson Working Group here, that was at Fort Boone. I attended that as well, and, um, I wish more people, local people would attend those meetings. There were so many people from the Fort Carson, Apnean Canyon there to talk about, you know, what's going on. And there's an awful lot that goes on, not only with training, but how they're controlling, uh, you know, when, when we do have training and the grass gets run over, and how they're replenishing that grass, and how they're monitoring the wildlife, and, uh, they're keeping up with the numbers. They have a whole system that counts the number of deer and elk and rodents and all this stuff that they have to body-buy.
You can come track a year.
Yeah, and also, and also they, you know, the, the prehistoric sites that, uh, they have to keep on, you know, track of how they're affected, if any, in any way when they do have training, so there's an awful lot of stuff that, but they, uh, they, they, they want to have another one probably, and I think they sent, I think either August versus September. And you've been to one?
I have, but I didn't see, I didn't see this advertised in terms.
I know it came out, one time as an advertisement, and then it was in a little cycle, this
In the vibrant?
In the vibrant.
Well, you know what, Mayor, that's very important for people within the community to go to those meetings.
Sure.
Because there's several people that come to those meetings that just, it's not an affirmative, positive, uh, statement that they make. And I think maybe the people from Fort Carson, Penean Canyon, don't have the right idea about what the general population of Trinidad actually believes about that maneuver site, so I think we, you know, I'm sorry, I, I wanted to go, but I didn't see it. So let me know.
I will, when I do your, I'll, I'll make sure that comes.
No, I think it's important.
The only other thing I had, I think that was a question that you had, uh, about art space, are they going to be here tomorrow, Greg? In the afternoon?
They should be here, well, they should be here in the afternoon, but they'll be here in the morning too, I think. Can't remember what they were meeting with.
Yeah, I thought, you said June fifth?
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow, sorry. But are we, do we have a time, or?
He hasn't given me a time, he's, I, they were, I'm taking a meeting with the contractor and then it sounds like they're going to wing a meeting with us, I don't know, because I haven't seen the time.
No, I think we need to nail them down and ask them to put wing in this stuff, because, you know, we need to know you and I have been involved with that pretty regularly, and I, so I think we need to impress them, and that they need to give us some firm times that for the meetings. They just can roll into town and say, wow, I think it's going to be two thirty, and then they say that, that doesn't work for me, or, you know, this, Michelle.
Greg?
Um, you all have an announcement on your table, but Colorado Preservation Inc. will be having a meeting here, and they're having a get-together at the Rock and Paul Museum on the fourteenth at five o'clock, so if you can make that, that'd be great. Um, I had a conversation today with Rick Klein about the Tiger Grant, and it, like every administration, they're reading it, so it's not the Tiger Grant anymore, now, now it's called the Build Grant.
No, actually, there's two different ones, Build is different from Tiger.
No, he said that's what it's called.
I didn't think so, I thought they were because of the Build Grant.
And anyway,
We'll find out.
What they're asking is whether Trinidad would be the sponsoring entity this year.
Was it last year, Lanning or something?
Uh, yeah.
Last year was Raton.
Raton to Lanning.
Do you have any objection to that, if we bring something like that?
No.
Okay. Um, and then, I talked about this a little while ago, but we're putting together a grant application for GOCO, and it's a grant, seventy-five thousand dollar grant request, and it would serve to match some of the DOLA grant that we're also applying for now.
For which project?
For the, um, master plan development for the crazy
And we could do that, I mean, for sure, we could use a GOCO grant to
Yes.
Positive on that. To me, I don't know, that's right here.
I know, that's what I'm being told by the guys that apply for these grants.
Well, I hope so.
Okay. So if, uh, you have no objection, I'll bring forward a resolution next meeting for that.
Uh, just keep in mind, and like I said, on the, whatever Wednesday it is, the, the next Chamber of Commerce meeting, uh, Mr. Groberger, Groberger, who's our director for, uh, the Southwest Antract Chief, is going to be doing a presentation at that meeting. So, you know, council may want to
It's around the twelfth next week?
No, it's Wednesday next week.
The nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth, yeah, it's two weeks from today. So we'll have a meeting the night before, but just a reminder, put it on your calendar so that you can
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. First of all, um, as another reminder, there's still a work session on Thursday, right? Okay, Thursday at one thirty, so, so we'll, okay, so I wanted to, uh, kind of make a, a public announcement now that it is no longer in the realm of, of conferral with our attorneys, that, um, that we um, that we have elected, in the case of Hamer versus Trinidad, the city has elected, um, is, is all of you know, anyone who's been following this, we had a favorable ruling in the United States District Court on that case. It was appealed to the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals, three judge panel. Appeals are initially assigned to a three judge panel. And we had basically an undoing of our District Court victory. That is, it wasn't affirmed in the three judge panel. So city staff in conferral with our SERSA attorneys, um, we elected to have the SERSA attorneys, um, basically petition for a rehearing in front of or before the full Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals. So from the three judge panel to the entire Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals, I, um, looked, I Googled that before the meeting tonight, because I know one of you, I think Council Lopez asked me before, how many judges there are currently in the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals, and there are twenty. So if the petition for rehearing is granted, it would be on bunk, which is before the full Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals instead of the three judge panel. And one of the reasons why we wanted to do that, and that seemed like a good idea, was because our only other recourse at this time was either an appeal, a petition for, for cert or certiorari to the United States Supreme Court, or accept the decision and let it be remanded to the District Court for rehearing or retrial. So the one avenue, um, available to us was what we decided to do. That is, if we didn't do that now and try to pursue that avenue, that would be foreclosed for, forever. And we would still will have, if the petition for rehearing is denied, we could still appeal, we're going to go back to District Court. And if it's granted, then we get what essentially would be another, well, an A bite at the apple in addition to what we would have otherwise. So that is why, and as I, is, you know, has been mentioned, there are some novel legal issues and some things that the three judge panel did that are novel from a legal standpoint in this area. So I, I just wanted to report on that publicly now that that has been done, that is, the petition for rehearing has been filed. I just felt like that was appropriate for me to comment on. Any, any questions on that?
I'm sorry, I, I might have missed something. I kind of zoned out.
Oh, what, in Cheryl and Lyne? No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
No, it's just, it happens just, I don't know.
I know, and it's just what I find interesting, so go ahead.
Okay, so what happens if we lose the appeal to all the, the judges in that camp?
If the petition for rehearing is denied, or let's say the petition for rehearing is granted, and we don't get a favorable ruling, that is, they affirm the decision of the three judge panel, then we have the same, the same options that we would have had otherwise. That is, a direct appeal to the United States Supreme Court, or allow the decision to stand and have it go back down to the US District Court. And, you know, our lawyers, when it does eventually go back to District Court, our lawyers will still be, be saying that the motions for summary judgment were still appropriate. You know, it didn't go to a full trial, it didn't make it that far. It was the granting of our motions for summary judgment, which is kind of a, a midway victory for us, and then, and ensuing, um, a granting of our motion to dismiss when we won the, uh, the summary judgments. So that's why, really, no one has won, no one has lost. We've kind of had rulings favorable to us, you know, players' counsel and the plaintiff has had rulings favorable to them. But we still have the same remedies, to your question, Councilman Gray, we have the same remedies back to District Court or appeal to the United States Supreme Court. And, you know, as I had mentioned before, there is a divergence, divergence of opinion from other circuit courts of appeals on a federal level that don't, and, and so there isn't uniformity, there is no precedent in the United States Supreme Court. Um, so this really seems to be like, it would be ripe for review by the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals, and, and it would be further ripe for, I would think, uh, resolution before the United States Supreme Court.
You know, this, if it gets that far, even if it builds a course of it, it's gonna have some major repercussions across the country.
You're right. You're right. And we talked about that, and that is absolutely correct. Also, I should say, by the time that we had our conference call and, uh, we, that was Tom Beach, Audra Care, Greg Sun, and myself, um, we had not been approved for the financial component of an appeal to the United States Supreme Court. But no matter what, I think those of us who were, you know, you know, on that phone call from the city, even if we had been approved, I think we still would have recommended this course of action because it is, if we don't do it now, it's not an option that's available to us in the future. You have to petition for rehearing to the entire Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals.
When do you anticipate that that appeal may, may hear, when it will.
Uh, we did the petition for rehearing and I, I don't know how long it will be, but I, I would say months, because they have to, they, they will have a briefing schedule. Um, and, and that's if they take it. So if it's denied, we'll probably hear pretty soon. And please, you know, add in, if I get anything wrong, um, if we, if it's a denial, it'll be done pretty quickly. But if it's approved, then they will be doing a briefing schedule. But we should know if it's accepted or rejected in short order, right? I think probably within sixty days. And I'll report on that as soon as I know.
And you, and so the update?
I have a question. So is SERSA paying our attorney fees?
They are, they are.
At what point will they stop?
Well, they're paying for this, and I, I think Greg is, is willing to add, and, and I welcome that. They are paying for our attorney's fees, but this is part of the, the, the consideration, and that is, at some point, if we are not prevailing, if we're not the prevailing party, we may be liable for payment of plaintiff's, council's attorney's fees.
Yeah, they can, at any time, they could say we've had enough.
Right. And so SERSA is aware of that. I think that is part of the acceptable coverage that we have, you know, I mean, it's, they know.
Is covered under our insurance?
I believe it is. And, and they said that this next step was covered, but what was undecided from our coverage standpoint, at least at this point, was, um, a petition for summary to the United States Supreme Court. They hadn't decided. I would hope that that, if we have unfavorable rulings, I would hope that that would be covered, because I would think that SERSA would want to have a, a precedent, you know, if it's yea or nay in this area. However, as we, you know, spoke to Marty Nathan Kloster, it's never good to be the lawyer making bad law. You know, if you have, if you have the precedent that goes against municipalities, that's kind of your, your claimed immortality, isn't it? You know, decision. So.
Your lawyer.
That's right. The, the last thing I wanted to report on, and that is MuniCor. And, and I don't want to get defensive, and I, I really am not, and I, I don't really want to go into much detail on that, because I don't want to be accused of throwing anyone under the bus, you know, just because the revenue was down. I was getting kind of a quizzical look from Councilwoman Miles. And I have a lot to say on that, but I, the one that I want to say is, and I know you're probably thinking, God, aren't you old to be a MuniCor prosecutor? And my answer is yes. However, I just want you to know that what is brought before me, I really try prosecute and do prosecute in good faith. And so I don't want you to think that I'm like dismissing cases left and right, and that's the reason why the revenue is down in municipal court. Two, I know that Ms. Valencic is in the audience thinking, MuniCor is not a revenue, you know, making measure. Yes, I'm sure she's, but I mean, it's not about the money, but I want to explain to you, there are reasons why revenue is down, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, it's not because. Well, no, it's not the crime is down. MuniCor filings are down. But how about if I send you a memo?
Okay.
Okay? I'll send you a memo. So that's my way of saying memo to follow. Okay? Yes?
Miss McCourt is just as effective as everything else when we don't have as many plans on.
Right, right. That's correct.
So when these guys doing, when they're working, the shifts they're working just to cover the city, they aren't doing as much law, they're not doing as much.
Traffic.
Traffic control because they're on other things.
Felony shootings. I mean, that is a felony, but, but yes.
One thing that I've seen a lot of, a lot of people running UEs on Main Street, on Main Street.
I've seen a lot of people parked opposite wise on.
Okay, anything else?
I have none.
Okay. General, please, motion adjourned. Maybe a first and a second. Ballot, please.
Oh, um, just do hang around, Tom, you have just a few slides you wanted to show, and I found you had linked that.
Oh, sure.
Thirty seconds?
Sure.
Nice. I promise, Mr. Gray, I'll go no more than an hour and a half. I think this works. Thank you for indulging, sir. Have you seen the, the back house at Monument Lake?
I have pictures that were taken on Monday afternoon.
I didn't realize those showers were in the back, so I was like, where are the showers?
The signs have been ordered today.
Okay.
Why don't you stay there, Mr. Valencic?
We had, we had a, uh.
If you come up, you have ownership.
This, this is why my daughter does this, because I don't understand it. Okay, this is the, looking at the side, this is the concrete ADA parking area, as you can see in the front here. This is just inside to one of the ADA restrooms with the high-low showerhead. A real nice building, just gorgeous building. Uh, outside that same door, in the men's room, I wasn't ready enough to try the women's room. Because they are, they were open before Memorial Day weekend, they've been in use, so. We had a problem, I won't say a problem, we had an issue with not getting, uh, both of the water heaters in the unit uh, for propane. They only sent one propane to us, so we only had one water heater out during the weekend. I got that in my office this afternoon. Um, that's the inside of the, uh, daleproof sinks and urinal and the sign, the mirrors and everything. A little further back into it. This is a shot from the front, obviously, from the other side, with the riprap that was put on the side of the hill to keep the hill back. Uh, this is the RV dump station down at the bottom, which going down to the old fish hatchery off to the left down there, if you see. Uh, before, this portion here was way down at the very bottom, you can kind of see the little sign down at the back. Um, and it was just a single lane deal, people had to go down, turn around, and come back up, and you were up there before. Nice unit, the green thing there is the water rinse-out deal, which is supposed to be potable water, which I wouldn't drink if I was me. And this is something we actually added, uh, this is a culler we put across the road to mitigate some of the flooding and water coming down off the hill and down the road, because from a, there was time when we were up there, I think at the, uh, retreat, up there in the, the main room up there. All the water runs from that building, clear down this, this gully is where it runs down to. So it would, it could be a real swamp down here. So we put the culler in, the contractor suggested, and I agreed to it. They had all the riprap, we've minimal cost for the culler, we just put it in while we were there to get it over with and make a nice unit out of it. And then this is just another shot looking back the other way up, the showers on the far end, what is the east end of buildings.
You know, it's a nice addition to Monument Lake and thanks, thanks for getting that operation on the vibe of Memorial Day. That was the big, that was the big thing.
We were all up there Thursday before Memorial Day weekend, all of us. The plumber's inspection, the propane dealer, the contractor, myself, and a couple, actually electrician.
I'm sure all of the.
The lighting is nice, it's motion interactive, so it's.
My cell phone, is anything to open the door? And for some reason, the doors aren't quite set. Uh, I talked to Brian Mondrian yesterday, he's gonna get the door set a little bit, so they close a little easier. But then also, as well as this, uh, restroom downtown, the commercial one is now, the doors just don't close right, so we're gonna get stickers on the inside of the doors, they please close door when you leave, just to kind of remind people, because everybody just walks out.
Don't they have like the hydraulic arms?
They just have the, uh, spring hinges. There's three spring hinges per door. If they're adjustable, but there's not just for the wind up there for a long time.
I have an unrelated question. Somebody came in my office today and said they were up at Monument Lake and their roads were in really bad shape.
They weren't, yesterday they weren't. Why do you go around the lake?
I just think they're better than they used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two plus weeks ago, I went around and they weren't bad at all. But that's, and a storm up there can change that.
On the east side of the lake, they were still kind of rocky, but they were as best as they.
Nasty a few weeks ago when it was wet.
But they, they weren't, I didn't remember them sticking out like, man, these roads are terrible.
Just about to call roll or not?
I think I need a motion.
Think of, know everybody did. We did a motion.
I did a motion, then Michelle a motion.
I'm sure anybody's in some analysis.
That's nice.
I'm in a cycle picture.
Good job. Been a long time coming.
Worked well.
Yeah.
Good job.
Oh, you're gonna give him the business.
Yeah.
You know, you're right.